Call the meeting to order, please rise.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening, everyone. I trust you all had a great summer. First of all, I'd like to welcome Julie Clay and John Kopec, our two of our town council members who are here tonight, and Mr. Joe McCary, our superintendent-elect, who will be starting on October 1st, but he decided to join us tonight. So we will start with item 1.0, Presentations and Awards, 1.1, Research Proposal, Comparing the Effects of Two Rates of Specific Praise on Student Behavior. Dr. Conway.
Thank you very much, Mrs. Fisher. We have Kathleen Williamson here. I invite her to come up to the microphone. She is a student at the NEAC School of Education at the University of Connecticut, and she's doing research on the use of specific praise in classrooms, which will involve classroom observations. So while she's not working specifically with individual students, she would be in the classroom and also observing. She would be asking students, however, to complete a climate survey four times a year. There are 11 items on it. She thinks they will take five minutes each for a total of 20 minutes across a period of five months, plus or minus two months. I'm going to turn this over to her to give you just a brief synopsis of the research proposal, and then she would be happy to answer questions.
Absolutely. Thank you, Dr. Conway.
The microphone over.
Thank you very much for having me today, and thank you for allowing me to speak with you. Again, my name is Kathleen Williamson. I'm a fourth-year doctoral student in the School Psychology Program at the NEAC School of Education. And my dissertation study is on the use of specific praise in the classroom. We know there's an association between student behavior and academic achievement, and in this climate of accountability, it's very important to manage that student behavior efficiently and effectively. So there are a number of evidence-based strategies that have been shown to work in the literature, and one of those is specific praise. Currently, the recommendation is that teachers increase their use of specific praise, and it kind of stops there. It's just a general recommendation. So what I would like to do with my dissertation is move the field just a tiny step further in trying to find an optimal rate for that specific praise. You know, when can we maximize student behavior? What rate of specific praise delivery in the classroom? So to do that, I will be comparing two rates of specific praise and observing the effects on student disruptive behavior and on task behavior in the classroom. As Dr. Conway mentioned, I will also be looking at climate to see, as an exploratory question, to see if there are any perceptible differences in the climate when you increase the use of specific praise, and looking at the teacher's opinions on the feasibility and acceptability of these rates, which is very important if we're going to close that research to practice. Yeah.
Does anybody have any questions?
If I might just add, this is going to be, the teachers opt in to do this.
Oh, yes. Voluntary participation. I'll be recruiting teachers in grades three, four, and five. The research shows that's when praise declines in the elementary grades.
Mrs. Arnn.
Kathleen, when these things come to us, I always have a concern about the trade-off, the interruption to class time and the trade-off for that. And I think I'm remembering, I went to, that you could be visiting the classroom up to five times in a week.
Sure.
Can you make me feel comfortable that that's not going to be disruptive to the classroom and to learning?
Sure, absolutely. Yes, I will be visiting the classroom up to five times per week. It could be two or three, depending on the teacher's schedule. And I'll be conducting observations, and there will be a second person with me from time to time to do some reliability estimates. So there would be two of us at times. About one out of five observations, there'd be two people. And once I arrange with the teacher the time of the observation, I would simply enter the room, sign in, of course, in the school, enter the room without interrupting her lesson, his or her lesson, and sit off to the side so that I can see the students, but I'm not necessarily in their view, and then observe the students for 30 minutes without interacting with them or the teacher at all.
Okay. And I have to comment on the gift cards that you're providing. That seems to be a bit, I don't know what the right word is, inappropriate, over the top. Is that a standard? I don't remember reading about that.
It is. In our practice at UConn, that has been a standard that's been set as a small compensation for the teacher's time in the study, and that has been approved by the IRV at UConn.
And how will this directly, positively affect students in Vernon? How is this good for students?
Absolutely. By increasing the use of the specific praise in the classroom, students will experience a more positive classroom environment where there's fewer of their peers, or maybe themselves, displaying disruptive behavior, and they're more on task, and that will create a better classroom climate for the teacher and the students.
I would imagine for a teacher who doesn't use praise, that would make a difference.
Absolutely.
I'd be hard-pressed to believe that our teachers are not being positive with their students. So for the teachers that are doing that, how will that, again, have positive impact?
Sure, and that's a part of the inclusion criterion. So the two rates that I'm using are .4 specific praise statements per minute and .8, which translates to 12 or 24 statements a 30-minute period. And when I recruit the teachers, I will be screening them, in a sense, to see, I'll do some baseline observations, and if that teacher is giving more than my lower rate, they'll be excluded from the study, because I would never ask them to use less of an evidence-based strategy. The research shows that natural occurring rates of specific praise are typically in the .2 range per minute, and that's not the very fault of the teacher, but that's typically where they are and before intervention.
And will you be providing something to Vernon at the end of your study?
I don't have that built in here, but of course, I can work out an arrangement to work with maybe the teachers in the school or schools that I end up recruiting from to provide professional development around specific praise. Teachers who are interested in the study but don't end up participating either because we've reached capacity or they did not meet some of those inclusion criteria will be offered my training in specific praise as well.
May I ask Dr. Conway a question? Seems we get a number of these requests, Dr. Conway. Is Vernon selected for any particular reason? Do we get more requests in other districts? Are we on par with other districts from the UConn who's asking to use Vernon as part of their research?
I would say proximity has something to do with it, with UConn and the diverse nature of our population. So I have not asked my colleagues how many requests they get as well. I know some of my colleagues get quite a few, but I'm talking about East Hartford-Hartford, and I would assume that it would be because of the diversity, and that would be an assumption on my part. But yes, we do get requests, and, you know, in this case, the teacher is opting in. We're not saying all teachers must do this, and so I think it's a good support. But we do take many students from a NEAC School of Education as student teachers and as master's candidates, so we do have quite a connection with the NEAC School.
Thank you. Anybody else have any questions? Okay. Anyone want to make a motion? Mrs. Bush.
I'd like to make a motion. I have to get to that page. That. This case needs to be addressed. I'd like to make a motion that the Vernon Board of Education approve the research proposal comparing the effects of two rates of specific praise on student behavior to be conducted in the Vernon Public School Elementary Schools.
Mr. Wolf.
Second motion.
Any further discussion? All those in favor? Anything to impose? Motion carries. Thank you very much, and good luck to you.
Thank you very much. Thank you for your time.
Technical break.
Yes, Michelle.
Okay.
Thank you. It's Friday. Thank you.
Do you hear that?
Good.
Okay.
Yeah.
Much better. Thank you. We'll move on to item 1.2, Research Proposal for Screener for Academic Distress. Dr. Conway.
Thank you very much. I would like to invite Dr. Scott Hannan forward. He is a doctor at the Institute of Living in Hartford, and he has come to ask for access to students and parents to opt into a study on school avoidance. And we do have students in Vernon with that name or label. Not that we would be providing him with any particular students, but just as a nutshell, he would be inviting all students to participate in their parents. The parent and the child would have to agree to participate. Participation, I believe, is online, so it would not be coming through the schools, wouldn't be taking time out of school. And then, as part of pulling it together, they would be asking parents for release of attendance data at the end of the year, if I recall correctly. I'm going to turn this over to Dr. Hannan to give you a quick synopsis. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Conway. Again, my name is Scott Hannan. I'm at the Eastern Living Anxiety Disorder Center and do a lot of work with school refusal. So colleagues and I have designed a measure that would be predictive of school refusal. And the reason we want to do this, we know it's such a significant problem, that if we can start to catch these children early, we can intervene and start accommodations or start treatment before the problem gets out of hand. Right now, the measure that we're looking at is designed for students with grades seven through 12, so ages 13 through 18 at this point in time. What we'd be doing is distributing a notice at the beginning of the year, asking people to participate in the study, and then, as Dr. Conway said, they can go online and agree to participate in the study. They're actually, we're in the first phase, and so we have a small grant to start this questionnaire this fall. So right now, we're just looking for the students to do the questionnaire and the parents to do a follow-up questionnaire. In terms of getting data on attendance, that's the next grant that we're going to be looking for. So I'll come back and present the next grant if we do get funding for that next side. So right now, what we're doing is called factor analysis. We're just going to basically look at the measure and see what items hold together, see what subscales connect up, and get rid of items that don't really look like they will be predictive of school refusal. We're also looking to do test, retest liability in some of the districts, but I think for Vernon, we're looking to do just the initial factor analysis. After we revise the measure based on the factor analysis, we'd be looking for another grant to then come back and talk to you further about doing this, where we'd actually look to collect data on school attendance.
Anybody have any questions?
If I may note, Mrs. Fisher, the possible motion was just, we just typed it incorrectly in the quotes. If you would just replace screener for academic distress, which is the name of this study, I do apologize for the name, the wrong name of the study. Screener for Academics Distress.
Mr. Wolf.
I'd like to make a motion that the Board of Education approve the research proposal for screener for academic distress to be conducted in Vernon Public Schools. That's presented.
Is there a second? Mrs. Bush?
Second.
Any further questions? Can I ask Mr. Stansel?
Doctor, going through the material, can't help but notice the questionnaire is 101 questions for the students to answer. Doesn't that seem a little extreme for some of the other ones?
Well, they're, you can start in seventh grade through 12th grade. So we went through it, and just in our, we're expecting today 20, 30 minutes, but part of this is, this initial part of the study, we want to cut out a lot of those measures. So the measure's not going to be 100 items at the end of it. We're expecting, we're probably going to cut about half of the items out. But right now, we have to go through the factor analysis, see which items are not hanging together so we can get rid of those items.
Okay, thank you.
Do I understand that this is a one-time collection of information that won't happen during school, be at the option of the parents and the student to do from their home?
Yes, from their home. They will do it online.
Okay.
Any other questions? All those in favor of the motion? One more. Thank you. Good luck.
Thank you very much, Dr. Hannan.
Okay, we'll move on to item 2.0, Consent Agenda. Mr. Wolf.
Motion to move the consent agenda, as presented.
Is there a second? Mrs. Bush?
Second.
Anyone like to pull it? Mr. Stansel.
I'd like to pull item I first.
Anything else? Mrs. Arnn?
Item A and J, please.
And J, Mr. Martin.
A and C.
Anyone else? Anything else? Okay, so we will vote on item 2.1, V, D, E, F, G, and H. All those in favor? Commander, yes. We'll start with item A. I don't remember who pulled A. Mrs. Arnn did. Oh, okay.
I just have a question about the padding. In the minutes, it said that the padding in the VCMS gym would be installed during the summer. I just wanted to know if that was done.
I can turn that over to Mr. Carter.
Through the chair to Mrs. Arnn. Yes, that's definitely working out here. The pads have been ordered. They have to be custom measured and cut to allow for the outlets, the light switches, and so forth. We're in the process of doing that with the vendor now. We expect it to be complete within the next two weeks.
So they will not be installed before school starts?
Correct.
Did you have a question on A also?
Just a correction for A. Steve reads, Steve, Mr. Martin. I think it should be Mr. Steve.
This is true.
And I have another one on that same lines on, for Steve. We can move that now? Same issue, same correction. It reads Steve, Mr. Martin. It should be Mr. Steve on page 14.
Okay. Is there anything else on A or C for anyone?
No.
Can we combine those and vote on those together then? Okay, Mrs. Arnn.
Move to approve items A and C.
Is there a second? Mr. Martin. All those in favor? Yes. Okay, now item I. Mr. Stansel, you present.
Thank you. I just wanted to pull this out for two reasons. Specifically because it is an incredibly generous donation, and I think we needed to recognize that fact publicly, but also because the way it read, I know I had some questions with Dr. Conway earlier, that she responded to me, and I appreciated that. So I thought it might be worthwhile to give the entire explanation, because the way it reads right now, it seems like we're going to spend $25,000 on Chromebooks.
Thank you very much, Mr. Stansel. Through the chair to the board. This is a gift. Erin Pelletier became our Teacher of the Year today. She was, this was announced, and a relative of hers is quite a philanthropist and has offered to donate $25,000 to the school for the fifth-grade classes. So there are no restrictions on that funding for the fifth-grade classes. That is the restriction. So it's not for the entire school. The first thing that the teachers would like to do is to purchase Chromebooks so that every child has access to a Chromebook, and they'd like to incorporate those as a learning tool in their lessons. So the teachers are very, very excited about that first stage, but that's not the only thing. They can do other things as well. They're very excited, and they truly hope the board will approve the acceptance of this donation.
Mrs. Arnn.
I can't disagree. It's an incredibly generous gift, but I have to ask the question about equity. I have a concern about that. Providing something to a school through a generous gift rather than through a budget just makes me slightly uncomfortable, and I'm wondering if there's a way to redistribute $25,000 from the Northeast School budget to other schools to help alleviate some of that inequity.
That was a question for me. I would think that this is similar to a grant in that we would be then saying, it's like those scholarships we used to get to college, and someone would say, here's $500, and then the college would say, all right, well, we're subtracting 500 over here, you won't get it from here. It is a very generous offer, and I agree with Mrs. Arnn completely about the equitability of the gift. It still would be a shame not to accept the gift because of that. Although, if this is something that is very important to the board, then you certainly have the right to do that, and we would thank Ms. Pelletier, or Ms. Macy, excuse me, very generously for her offer. But you're right, it does set up.
Oh, in that light, is there, I mean, I don't want to say, no, thank you. I don't. But is there something that you can envision doing creatively to, I don't know, spread the wealth, or at least not? It sets up fifth graders at Northeast School, every fifth grader to have a Chromebook. We don't have that in every other building.
That's correct.
Okay, so is there a way to help achieve a little more parity across the system for fifth graders and Chromebooks? If there has been money designated for the purchase of Chromebooks at Northeast School, could that be redesignated?
We did just buy a Chromebook cart for every school through the Alliance Grant. So every school just did receive one, but this is specifically for grade five, these Chromebooks. And so if that Chromebook cart was supposed to be used for the entire school, then there would be many other students that wouldn't have access at Northeast School, that wouldn't have access to those Chromebooks.
May I ask Mr. Pakarol a question through you?
Based on what I'm asking, is there a way to distribute funding to impact other fifth grades or other technology purchases?
Through the chair to Mrs. Arnn. The, just by way of process, just to make sure the board understands, these funds are being donated to the school, meaning to the student activity account at the school. So it's not going into the general fund that's available through the local budget. So with that in mind, the board has the opportunity, as Dr. Conway was stating, to reallocate funds for different purposes based upon this donation, assuming that the school accepts it, the board accepts it, goes into the student activity account, and is used for that specific purpose. It's always a challenge with the student activity funds, the donations are made for a specific purpose, they have to be used for that purpose. So redistributing the student activity account funds is not an option for us, as we get permission from the original source, but looking at the local budget as a potential offset might be an option, certainly from the purview and authority of the board to do that.
And I don't want to vote against the gift, but would the board consider requesting that Mr. Pakarol look into what he mentioned, that something in our budget may work to establish a little more parity?
Mr. Wolf had his hand up.
To the issue of equity, I think the board has the opportunity to make this type of an adjustment when it comes time to doing our technology purchase at budget time. You know, we look at all the schools, and we make those purchases based on trying to do those things. So right now, this may create an inequity for a period of time during the year because of the generous donation, which I would hate to see us turn away, but it does give us the opportunity to level the playing field when it comes to budget time. We would have to look at that and say, you know, if they have this, we can balance that out through the other schools, through our budget process, and that is our, you know, big task.
Mr. Stansel.
I understand your hesitation, Michelle. I hesitated over it too, especially with the original reading of the language. I thought it was unfortunately too restrictive, but I'm glad there's more leeway to it. Unfortunately, the problem we face is, we would have to find $25,000 that specifically impacted the fifth grade at Northeast, and only the fifth grade, because this $25,000 can only be used for the fifth-grade classes at Northeast. It can't be used for anything else. So that's, to have some sort of offset come out of the Northeast budget, that's what we would have to somehow look for. I agree completely with Mr. Wolf. I think the appropriate time to address it is with the budget going forward, and the way I chose to look at this is, it's a pilot. You know, two fifth-grade classes at Northeast are going to use the heck out of Chromebooks, and maybe it's something we find out has a real huge benefit, and as a result, it is something that we want to do in the rest of the schools. We have often received donations that were somewhat inequitable. Schools have received entire computer labs donated, for instance, that other schools haven't received. So we just have to look at it as a point-in-time donation, and then try and balance it out if we think it's a worthwhile thing later on.
Mrs. Bush.
I agree with Mr. Stansel that in the past, we have accepted gifts that were a little more specific to a grade level or a school or something like that. I think the scope of the donation is what I think the board is concerned about. I think it's an absolutely generous gift, and I think it will impact a large number of students, maybe just at one school, but I still think it will affect students. And I think down the road, if we do look at it as somewhat of a pilot, it could affect the students in the long run if we find the benefit of having Chromebooks available for every student, especially in, we're a little more in upper grades. I know we have iPads for the kindergarten and the lower grades, and, you know, they're not, probably not as effective as the Chromebooks would be in the upper grades. So I fully would support this, and I think it's an extremely generous gift to our school system, and we should be accepting it open arms.
Anyone else have anything to add? Anyone want to make a motion? Mr. Stansel.
I'd like to make a motion that we approve 2.1, item I.
Is there a second? Mrs. Bush?
Second.
And any further discussion or comments? All those in favor? Yes. Thank you. And the last item that we pulled was item J. I don't remember who pulled this. Okay, sorry.
I know I sound like a broken record, but I'm always concerned about impacting student learning time, and in this particular proposal, it says that classroom activities and the assessments will take approximately 45 to 50 minutes per child. I'd like to know if that payback is worth that disruption.
Mrs. Fisher. And to the rest. I put this in under the consent agenda when I received it, because the very first line indicates that they're requesting our cooperation. So I am asking the board to discuss this, to have exactly that kind of conversation and comment. In the end, I am truly unaware of whether this will be just being nice, saying, I request your cooperation and that we have to do this. I don't know in the end, but if there's an opportunity for us to say, no, it's too much out of the classroom, that would be, you know, I would need to respond in that way and give your feedback to them if it is indeed something that they're asking us to do. I agree that, I think it was even more than that, I mean, 45 to 50 minutes, and then there's also a social skills assignment, another 15 to 30 minutes per child. So it is a lot of material, a lot of time out of the classroom, and I would not disagree with you.
I'd like to move to table this request until the superintendent can provide us more information, namely, is a request a requirement, and how will this study impact classroom learning, and what are the benefits to us if we go, to the students, I'm sorry, if we go forward with this request. Is there a second? Mr. Martin?
I'll second that.
Can I ask a question? I thought our little school program was only half-day.
We have, we now have full-day programs this year.
For all.
Right.
All right, all those in favor of tabling this request until we get more information? Yes. Okay, move on to the 3.0 Secretaries Report. Have the Board of Education to add or delete agenda items. Mr. Wolf.
Thank you, Mr. Motion that we added, agenda item 5.1C, Affirmation of Assignment of Vernon's High School Assistant Principal Jason Mango as Director of Teaching and Learning that was in your path at the seat area.
Is there a second on that motion?
I'll second that.
Thank you. Any questions or comments? All those in favor? Yes. Thank you. Okay, move on to item 4.0, Consent Agenda. Mr. Wolf.
Motion to move the consent agenda, as presented.
Is there a second? Mrs. Bush?
Second.
Anyone like to pull it? Mr. Stansel.
I'd like to pull item I first.
Anything else? Mrs. Arnn?
Item A and J, please.
And J, Mr. Martin.
A and C.
Anyone else? Anything else? Okay, so we will vote on item 2.1, V, D, E, F, G, and H. All those in favor? Commander, yes. We'll start with item A. I don't remember who pulled A. Mrs. Arnn did.
I just have a question about the padding. In the minutes, it said that the padding in the VCMS gym would be installed during the summer. I just wanted to know if that was done.
I can turn that over to Mr. Carter.
Through the chair to Mrs. Arnn. Yes, that's definitely working out here. The pads have been ordered. They have to be custom measured and cut to allow for the outlets, the light switches, and so forth. We're in the process of doing that with the vendor now. We expect it to be complete within the next two weeks.
So they will not be installed before school starts?
Correct.
Did you have a question on A also?
Just a correction for A. Steve reads, Steve, Mr. Martin. I think it should be Mr. Steve. And I have another one on that same lines on, for Steve. We can move that now? Same issue, same correction. It reads Steve, Mr. Martin. It should be Mr. Steve on page 14.
Okay. Is there anything else on A or C for anyone?
No.
Can we combine those and vote on those together then? Okay, Mrs. Arnn.
Move to approve items A and C.
Is there a second? Mr. Martin. All those in favor? Yes. Okay, now item I. Mr. Stansel, you present.
Thank you. I just wanted to pull this out for two reasons. Specifically because it is an incredibly generous donation, and I think we needed to recognize that fact publicly, but also because the way it read, I know I had some
Envision doing creatively to, I don't know, spread the wealth or at least not. It sets up fifth graders at Northeast School, every fifth grader to have Chromebook. We don't have that in every other building.
That's correct.
Okay, so is there a way to help achieve a little more parity across the system for fifth graders and Chromebooks? Is, is there, if there has been, if there has been money designated for the purchase of Chromebooks at Northeast School, could that be re-designated?
We did just buy a Chromebook cart for every school through the Alliance Grant. So every school just did receive one, but this is specifically for grade five, these Chromebooks, and so if that Chromebook cart was supposed to be used for the entire school, then there would be many other students that wouldn't have access at Northeast School, that wouldn't have access to those Chromebooks.
May I ask Mr. Paccaro a question through you? Based on what I'm asking, Michael, is there a way to distribute funding to impact other fifth grades or other, other technology purchases?
Through the chair to Ms. Aron. The, just by way of process, just to make sure the board understands, these funds are being donated to the school, meaning to the student activity account at the school. So it's not going into the general fund that's available through the local budget. So with that in mind, you know, the board has the opportunity, as Dr. Conway was stating, to reallocate funds for different purposes based upon this donation, assuming that the school accepts it, the board accepts it, goes into the student activity account and is used for that specific purpose. It's always a challenge with the student activity funds, the donations are made for a specific purpose, they have to be used for that purpose, so redistributing, redistributing the student activity account funds is, is not an option for us, as we get permission from the original source, but looking at the local budget as, as a potential offset, might be an option, certainly from the purview and authority of the board to do that.
And, and I don't want to vote against the, the gift, but would the board consider requesting that, that Mr. Paccaro look into some, what he mentioned, that a, something in our budget may work to establish a little more parity? Mr. Hall had his hand up.
To the issue of equity, I think the board has the opportunity to make this type of an adjustment when it comes time to doing our technology purchase at budget time. You know, we look at all the schools and we make those purchases based on trying to do those things, so right now, this may create an inequity for a period of time during the year because of the generous donation, which I would hate to see us turn away, but it does give us the opportunity to level the playing field when it comes to budget time. We would have to look at that and say, you know, if they have this, we can balance that out through the other schools, through our budget process, and that is our, you know, big task.
Mr. Stansel.
I understand your hesitation, Michelle. I, I hesitated over it too, especially with the original reading of the language. I thought it was unfortunately too restrictive, but I'm glad there's more leeway to it. Unfortunately, the problem we face is we would have to find $25,000 that specifically impacted the fifth grade at Northeast and only the fifth grade, because this $25,000 can only be used for the fifth grade classes at Northeast, it can't be used for anything else. So that's, to have some sort of offset come out of the Northeast budget, that's what we would have to somehow look for. I agree completely with Mr. Hall, I think the appropriate time to address it is with the budget going forward, and the way I chose to look at this is it's a pilot, you know, two fifth grade classes at Northeast are going to use the heck out of Chromebooks, and maybe it's something we find out has a real huge benefit, and as a result, it is something that we want to do in the rest of the schools. We have often received donations that were somewhat inequitable, schools have received entire computer labs donated, for instance, that other schools haven't received. So we just have to look at it as a point in time donation and then try and balance it out if we think it's a worthwhile thing later on.
Mrs. Bush.
I agree with Mr. Stansel, that in the past, we have accepted gifts that were a little more specific to a grade level or a school or something like that. I think the scope of the, of the donation is what I think the board is concerned about. I think it's an absolutely generous gift, and I think it will impact a large number of students, maybe just at one school, but I still think it will affect students. And I think down the road, if we do look at it as somewhat of a pilot, it could affect the students in the long run if we find the benefit of having Chromebooks available for every student, especially in, when we're a little more in upper grades. I know we have, you know, we have iPads for the kindergarten and the lower grades, and you know, they're, they're not, probably not as effective as the Chromebooks would be in the upper grades. So I fully would support this, and I, I think it's an extremely generous gift to our school system, and we should be accepting it open arms.
Anyone else have anything to add? Anyone want to make a motion? Mr. Stansel.
I'd like to make a motion that we approve 2.1 item I.
Is there a second, Mrs. Bush?
Second.
Okay, any further discussion or comments? All those in favor? It's unanimous. Thank you. And the last item that we pulled was item J.
I know I sound like a broken record, but I'm always concerned about impacting student learning time, and in this particular proposal, it says that classroom activities and the assessments will take approximately 45 to 50 minutes per child. Yeah, I'd like to know if that, if that payback is worth that disruption.
Mrs. Fisher.
Oh, yeah, I'm sorry. I thought you were going to ask. Um, I, I put this in under the consent agenda when I received it, because the very first line indicates that they're requesting our cooperation. So I am asking the board to discuss this, to have exactly that kind of conversation and comment. In the end, I am truly unaware of whether this will be just being nice, saying, I request your cooperation and that we have to do this. I don't know in the end, but if there's an opportunity for us to say, no, it's too much out of the classroom, that would be, you know, I, I would need to respond in that way and give your feedback to them if it is indeed something that they're asking us to do. I, I agree that, I think it was even more than that, I mean, oh, 45 to 50 minutes, and then there's also a social skills assignment, another 15 to 30 minutes per child. So it is, it is a lot of, it is a lot of material, a lot of time out of, out of classroom, and I would not disagree with you.
I'd like to move to, to table this request until the superintendent can provide us more information, namely, is it a request or a requirement, and how will this study impact classroom learning, and what are the benefits to us if we go, to the students, I'm sorry, if we go forward with this request?
Is there a second, Mr. Leno?
I'll second that.
Can I ask a question? I, I thought our little school program was only half day.
We have, we now have full day programs this year. Just for this year. Right.
All right, all those in favor of tabling this request until we get more information? unanimous. Move on to the 3.0 Secretaries' Report, opportunity for Board of Education to add or delete agenda items.
I'd like to make the motion that we add agenda item 5.1C, affirmation of assignment of Vern's Central School Assistant Principal Jason Mango as Director of Teaching and Learning that is in your path at the seat, are you ready for this?
Is there a second on that motion?
I'll second that.
Thank you. Any questions or comments? All those in favor? Unanimous. Thank you. On to item 4.0, Community Forum. I'm sorry, please sit down.
Want to find my add item 5.1D, an update on school-based health clinics and the HR position?
Is that two separate items or one? Oh, um, because HR is more.
Okay, well, HR is personnel, so could I add that as 5.1D, the HR position?
All right, is there a second on that motion? Mr. Stansel. Any questions or comments? All those in favor? Unanimous. Any other additions or deletions? This is mine.
I guess it's not personnel, perhaps general business? Okay. As item 7.1A, please, an update on the school-based health clinics.
Is there a second? Mr. Stansel. Any questions or comments? All those in favor? Unanimous. Any other additions or deletions from our draft agenda tonight? All right, thank you. Move on to item 4.0, Community Forum. Opportunity for comments on agenda items, potential future agenda items, or general information provided to the board from citizens and community organizations. Is there anyone who wishes to address the board this evening? All double ones. Okay, I think we're, I'll send on that, we'll move on to item 5.0 Personnel. 5.1 Administrative Resignations and Assignments, 5.1A. Is the acceptance of the resignation of Assistant Superintendent Jeffrey Burt and Director of People Personnel, Paddy Gill. So move. Is there a second? Mrs. Bush?
Second.
Any questions or comments, Ms. Aron? Before we go on this, I'd just like to thank both of them for their years of service at the L.A. NIST, and we're sorry to see them go, but we wish them well in our future endeavors. Okay, all those in favor? It's unanimous. And 5.1B is the affirmation of assignment of Mr. Testa as our Assistant Superintendent. Mrs. Bush?
Yes, I'd like to make a motion that the Vernon Board of Education affirm the assignment of Robert Testa as Assistant Superintendent effective July 1st, 2015.
Second the motion.
Any questions or comments? Ms. Aron?
Just a thank you very much to Mr. Testa. We're looking forward to working with him in that position, and I know you bring a whole lot of knowledge to it. Thank you.
Yeah, I'd like to congratulate you, we're very excited about you being in this position. Okay, all those in favor? It's unanimous. Thank you. Now, item 5.1C, affirmation of assignment of Vern's Central School Assistant Principal Jason Mango as Director of Teaching and Learning. Mr. Hall?
Motion asked, presented.
Is there a second? Mr. Leno? Any comments? Questions? I'd just like to add that we are also excited to have Jason in this position, he'd be a great asset. All those in favor? It's unanimous. Thank you. Okay, 5.1D. Discussion on or questions about HR?
I'd just like to know the status of the, of that position.
It was posted in the spring, and we did not have any successful applicants. I think it will be posted again as soon as Mr. McCary takes over. Turns out, Mr. Mills feels it needs to be posted. Mrs. Chanel is continuing on just in that role at the lower grade.
Any questions on that? Okay. Move on to curriculum. 6.1 Asset Disposal Requests. Mr. Paccaro?
Through the chair. And before the board, two requests this evening for disposal of assets. The first is from assets located at Lake Street School, Rockville High School, and Central Office. This is part of our ongoing efforts to clean out the schools of items that are no longer functional or for use and operations, which support the operation of the school. The first request has items, various items, hundreds actually, from overhead projectors, old printers, laptops, monitors, typewriters, VCRs, DHS recorders, if we remember what those are, and books. And also, I would like to share with the boards, by way of process, I think we've covered this a couple of years ago when we started the effort to clean out the schools, but any technology that comes before the board, before it makes it to the fixed asset disposal request, goes through our IT department at the town, we remove the hard drives, we destroy them through a Department of Defense certified process to protect information and confidentiality, and we also work with our IT department to see if they could be repurposed in other departments before they go up for public auction on our publicsurplus.com dot com website that we use to sell the assets. So with that being said, that is the first asset disposal request. The second is for all the old copiers that we took ownership of as we executed the new contract in partnership with the town to bring in the Xerox machines. These are the old Rico machines that were servicing our schools, we own them, they're currently being stored at no charge to us, consistent with the contract that we executed at the CBS Connecticut Business Systems Warehouse. We actually already have a potential buyer for them, so we're anxious to get this asset disposal request processed and over to the Town Council for final approval.
Mr. Hall?
I'd like to make the motion that the Vernon Board of Education approved the asset disposal request presented by Director of Business and Finance for item 6.1, and I'd like to speak to the motion after a second.
Mr. Bush?
Second.
And Mr. Hall?
Just want to confirm, the, any of the computer-type assets would be sold with no hard drive if they were to get onto a board or whatever it is that we use to sell? So it would be no hard drive, no chance of any personal identified information in those?
That's correct. Through the chair to Mr. Hall. All the hard drives are removed, DoD certified, destroyed by our IT department, which is right now, they actually get ground up through a company that we use. I, I think the IT department's looking into a compression machine that will also do that, but we don't have that. Same goes for our copiers as well. We've removed all the hard drives to inventory of them in my office just to make sure, and they are destroyed as well.
Anybody else have any questions? Ms. Aron? Through you, Mr. Paccaro, please.
It seems that we do this, but we still end up with these pages of accumulated items. Is, is this pretty typical, or are we seeing an end in sight to our pile of garbage, or like, I don't understand, it seems like we do this, and it, and it still piles up.
Through the chair. Our logistics coordinator, Mr. LaFontaine, has been very aggressive at going into closets and basements and closed doors that might not have been open for quite some time in an effort to, to clean out, make some space, and remove these assets from, from the schools. And plus, the funding comes back to the town as well, so I think there is an end in sight, probably won't be for a few more months.
Does anybody else have any questions?
I just have one question. I see this is only Lake Street School, are we going to be seeing the other elementary schools eventually?
To the chair, yes. Actually, this is Lake Street, Rockville, and Central, but yes, this will be elementary, there will be others coming.
I was just questioning, how many years ago did we purchase the everyday math program or books? And it looks like we're going away from everyday math. And Mr. Testa, answer that question.
Sure. We went through, we went through the process to the buyback program, and when we reached out to our buyback vendor, they did not want to offer us any money for those materials. So eight, nine years ago, that was a popular, prior to the Common Core standards, that was a popular resource in the state of Connecticut. Now it's not a popular resource, so.
So are we going to need to purchase other math books to replace these, or not?
Last year, we adopted a new resource, K-5, and we're all set as far as Common Core aligned curriculum, and we will continue to preserve these resources.
Very nice. All right, any other questions? Okay, all those in favor of the motion? It's unanimous. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Item 6.2, 2015-16 Alliance Grant approval.
Dr. Conway? Thank you. At your May 26th meeting, I, you received a copy of the Alliance Grant. The budget is identical to the document you have in front of you this evening. Some of the narrative changed a little bit, not substantively. We fixed some of our goals to make them SMART goals, we made things more clear, things that were clear to us were not so clear to the State Department. So we have just received word from the State Department, as you can see, that our application has been approved, it does now need to be approved by the Board of Ed, but we did ask you before we sent it into the state for feedback on the, the budget at that point, so, but we will take questions now, and Mr. Testa will be very happy to answer some of those questions.
Okay, Mrs. Aron.
Through you to Mr. Testa, please. On page five, and I know we've read this before, Mr. Testa, so it's not news to me, but I'm hoping that you can reconfirm that those SMART goals are, appear to be rather aggressive, are those all achievable?
We, we believe they're achievable, and I'm not sure which, are you looking under academic priorities, is that the page?
Yes, yes.
Yes, we talk about goal setting a lot, and some of the goals that we set out, certainly the goals that we have here are, are aggressive, but we certainly think that they're achievable.
And if we don't achieve them, what's the, what's the repercussion?
We had goals this year, and through our funding, that, that we didn't achieve. We do sit down with our rep from the State Department of Ed, and we review, so we'll have opportunities to make adjustments throughout the year. We do have to meet with our representative four times throughout the year, so after our fall data collection, we'll sit down with our representative and have the opportunity to adjust goals if, if necessary.
Any other questions? I have a question. Under the operation priorities? I don't know what it is, I'm sorry. It says 95% of our core area teachers will be receiving the projectors and the SMART boards or whatever, will be using them? I'm just asking why not 100% if they're getting it?
Our ultimate goal is 100%. Some of our teachers last year went through training, are up and running, used the, used that technology last year. As we continue to integrate the classrooms, we're also looking for our special education staff, support staff. So we decided 95% was a fair percentage, although we do believe that 100% of our teachers will be comfortable in using that technology in the classrooms.
I, I do believe our technology specialist has her word cut out for her.
Yeah, this process started last year. Hiring here last year really gave us the ability in, in the area of math to work with our teachers. As I mentioned, we have a new resource, also developing interactive lessons, so our teachers, we have a lot of capacity building that happened last year at each building. Going into this year, our teachers feel much more comfortable with that, and it's, over the summer, we continue to develop lessons, for example, kindergarten lessons that are more interactive, using the technology. I think it'll be an easy transition as we meet this goal. This will be one goal I think we should really, 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 really.
And my other question is on the next page about the benefits for the grant writer. I'm just confused, we only have one grant writer, correct?
Correct.
So here it says, "The grant writer for their medical dental life insurance anticipated benefit costs of 1.0 FTE is $8,707, but then the next line across is $20,700."
Those are two different figures regarding the, two different plans we have, one's a single plan and one's a family medical plan.
So the anticipated cost is in, correct?
Yes, depending on the plan that she chooses. Some of those, some of those numbers were kind of difficult when you're dealing with staff, is, we tried to put in figures that will allow us some flexibility, but again, throughout the year, we know we might need to adjust certain categories.
Thank you very much. Does anybody else have any question? Mr. Stansel?
Thank you, through you, Chair. Under the teacher laptops and mobile technology, and I have to unpage numbers, so, sorry, I'm going to put that as, it just listed as 500 other purchase services. So the 71 teacher laptops and mobile technology support, where does that put us in terms of getting every teacher laptop?
I don't have that, I technically referring to our technology plan. I know that we're on the road as far as each year, purchasing more laptops, I can certainly have that information for you, I can share that with Dr. Conway, and share it next week, get it to you in the morning.
Thank you. And the second question is in regards to the 60 student desktops, are we just going to take the 60 oldest and trash them?
Yes, that was the plan. Last year, we did an inventory, Mr. Burt did an inventory each building, so that was the plan to replace the oldest flat, or desktops that need, need to be replaced.
Okay, thank you.
Anybody else have any questions? Do you need a motion? Mr. Mrs. Bush?
I'd like to make a motion that the board accept the Alliance Grant from 2015, 2016.
Is there a second? Mr. Hall?
Second.
Any further questions or discussion? All those in favor? Unanimous. Thank you, Mr. Testa, for your work on this. Okay, we'll move on to item 6.3, approval of the Administrator Evaluation Support Plan.
Thank you, Mrs. Fisher. As you know, the teacher and the administrator evaluation and support plan must be approved annually now, it used to be every, I want to say 10 years. The board has already approved the teacher plan, which did not have any changes from 1415 to 1516. The administrator plan, we brought to you just the decision matrix, if you recall, and Mr. Burt went through that decision matrix with you. So we have gone back and forth with the state, Mr. Mango, the President of the Union, Mrs. Vittis Shaker, and Mr. Burt went back and forth with the state and the plan, and we have just received at the beginning of this month, the letter that says that it was approved. We've been waiting for it for quite some time. So overall, this plan has a few things that are different to it, just to let you know. So on, on page six, the first page six, because there are two sets of evaluation here. In the upper left-hand corner, you can see that there, the framework there, first, the first four, Instructional Leadership, Human Capital Management and Operations, and Culture and Climate, you've just heard those phrases when we talked about the Alliance Grant. So those are the four buckets that our, our state are using. They are changing the six-point rubric, not point, but the six-category rubric from six performance expectations to four, so they are combining several of them. The other two areas or buckets that we're looking at are the student learning objectives, which of course every principal has, every teacher has, and superintendent has, and then the school performance indicator or indices. These school performance indicators will not be counted this year, so the SLOs will be worth double, and that is because the new state test and the accountability system has not yet been set up. So those are the six areas that we are looking at in order to provide an evaluation to our teachers. If you look on page seven, you'll see that the three arrows across the top are the, what you would normally see in a growth plan. Goal setting and orientation, we've already done orientation, we are going to be starting goal setting very shortly. A mid-year review to see how we're doing, and maybe make some mid-course corrections, and then an end-of-year review, which concludes a self-assessment, followed by a summative assessment with the evaluator. And then you can see two arrows that have been slipped in, in between those three arrows, and these are called inquiry cycles. We piloted this, that we were one of seven districts in the state last year to pilot inquiry cycles. I piloted inquiry cycles with Mr. Rantolo at Maple Street and his assignment at Skinner Road. All the other administrators followed the plan as it was at that time. This is a lot. This is a lot of work. It's a lot of tough work. That means that in an inquiry cycle, the principal determines what the student learning need is or problem. What do the teachers need to know in order to change that, to fix that problem? And then the principal needs to say, what do I as a leader need to do in order to help that happen, to make sure that the teachers have the resources, the learning, everything that they need in order to make that change in the classroom? And as a supervisor, I would go in with the principal, we would talk about those things, I would go and observe meetings that the principal was holding, professional learning opportunities the principal was having, faculty meetings, grade level meetings, anything where the principal was leading the push to change instruction. And then you would regroup, and as part of your mid-year review, you would talk about how that went, and then you would either change it or add another one. So you don't want to start the year and say, we're going to fix reading comprehension in grade five by doing this, and then wait until June to figure out if you did it. You need to be doing this on an ongoing basis to say, you know what, this strategy we thought was going to be great is not great, and we should do something different. And so it's a continual growth and learning model. But that's the model. So it's a little different from what we do now. It's a little more hands-on, more collaborative, and very, very exciting. The next thing that I would bring your attention to is on page nine at the top. And so this is in addition to the inquiry cycles, which you can see are written there. In the first year of a principal, there would be four site visits and four reviews of practice. A review of practice is an observation of the principal in action, whether it's open house and the principal speaking with parents, whether it is a teacher meeting where the teacher is, excuse me, the principal's meeting with the teacher in doing an evaluation. There would be all kinds of reviews of practice. In the second year, at least two site visits, meaning spending several hours observing and walking through the school and observing classrooms with the teacher, plus the two inquiry cycles. You can see that's the same for third year and beyond. And then every other year, there'd be one where there would be four site visits and four reviews of practice and not the inquiry cycles. Because as you can see, when you start those inquiry cycles, they're very time-intensive, and if they're going to be worth your while, you really can't do it with all the principals at once. This would be with half of them. Then the last thing I would bring your attention to is on page sixteen and seventeen, and that was the summative rating that Mr. Burt went through with you in the spring. And so he still has everything, proficient is zero, and if you're below proficient at development or below standard, you subtract, and if you are at exemplary, you add. The State has approved this, which means they've approved the percentages that each area holds. You can see that on the left-hand side of those boxes, we still have PE1, et cetera. That's Performance Expectation 1. We anticipate that we may have to make a few changes here. They would be non-substantive because the State is going, and I've been on phone with them for two weeks. They keep promising that the new rubric is coming out that will go for performance expectations, and it just hasn't happened yet. So when it does, Mr. Mago and several administrators and I are going to sit down to just update this plan so it won't have substantive changes, and we certainly will share them with you. So those are the basic changes to this from the other model. This is, it's not a roundup model, as you can tell, and so I would entertain questions. I think Mr. Testa may be able to answer some as well, but Mr. Burt, Mr. Mago's work.
Please, Mrs. Bush.
Just a quick question about the inquiry cycles. You have them for two years. Are you expecting the administrators to go and maybe possibly from one year to another, still within the same inquiry cycle, or they're going to end at the end of the year?
The inquiry cycle would be one in the fall and one in the spring, minimum. So if you're working on something that's relatively discreet mathematics, an issue with mathematics, adding two-digit numbers in third grade, you don't work on that all year. There's a lot of other mathematics that you do in third grade. And so it may be that we're working on a new strategy, and so the teachers are working, the principal's making sure they have the information, the principal is meeting with them to go through their data, and we may, after three weeks, say, that strategy didn't work, we need to now reteach and do another cycle immediately. Or the strategy worked, we no longer need that, we're now going to be working on something else and do the inquiry cycle. The inquiry cycle does a lot of things, and one is it allows the evaluator to truly see the leadership capacities of the principal, but the other is that it really, it moves teaching and learning along, and everybody is growing at the same time.
Okay, thank you. And would you like to make a motion? Mr. Moore?
I'd make the motion that the Vernon Board of Education approved the 2015-2016 Administrator Evaluation Support Plan.
Is there a second? Mr. Lee? Any questions, concerns, comments? All those in favor? Thank you for everyone's hard work in putting this together. Item six point four, Malone and McRoe feasibility study timeline update.
Thank you, Dr. Conway, through you, Madam Chair, to the Board. And the Board's packet this evening is an update for one of the contract, the first contract available from Malone and McRoe, our consultant for the feasibility study. And you'll see in the handout that the contractor has broken down the project into five phases that take us from now through the end of November and to possibly December. We are in the first phase, the project initiation and data collection phase, of which the contractor has requested, and we are coordinating large data requests. And to give you an idea of some of the information that's been requested, that we're currently compiling, includes student enrollment data, past enrollment projection reports, EDO six reports for the past ten years, data on student retentions, floor plans with annotated classroom usage for all school facilities, summary of programmatic and billing changes over the last five years, school policies that affect student placement in schools, including pre-K, district special ed, ELL, and so forth, all the way through, and certainly one of the largest ones is the completed Connecticut Department of Public Health live birth data request package that's being coordinated through the Superintendent's Office with the Town of Vernon, which this data will be used to more accurately model incoming kindergarten class enrollment projections. So again, to share with the Board as an update, we are in that project initiation and data collection phase. We are actively pulling the data together, coordinating it with stakeholders as needed, and that will take us through the end of August before moving to the next phase.
And if we have any questions, Mr. Moore?
To Dr. Conway, I believe, through you. Have the town officials been a part of and kept appraised of all that's happening with this information gathering phase?
We have just started that, a week and a half ago, and so we sent to the mayor and Mr. Ward with copy to Mrs. Wheelock, the, all the information and the request, because that really has to come from the mayor's, the Department of Public Health, through the live births. We've also been working with Sean Gately. He's been working on behalf of, what was the role, town planner?
Town planner.
Town planner. Our town planner has left us, and so Mr. Gately from Economic Development has been helping us gather other information, the GIS maps of the mapping of the districts and things like that. So yes, they've been very, very cooperative.
I'm so glad to hear that, that there will be no surprises for anybody. Good, thank you.
Any other questions? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Item six point five, approval of the District Improvement Plan. Dr. Moore?
If you remember, on June twenty-second, our administrators held a full-day retreat, and I had to read to you the objectives because my printer was not working, and our copier was not working, and we couldn't get anything out of my computer. So we have looked, these are the objectives that the administrators decided. I've met with Mr. McCary, and at this point, I would ask that you approve the objectives. The indicators of success are not here, and the procedures are not here, the theories of action or the strategies are not here either. We are working on some of those and will continue, and I would expect Mr. McCary will want his handprint on that much more. But these objectives were in line with his thinking and with the entire administrative team. So that's why I would just ask that it's not the whole plan, it's just the goals, and the goals, of course, are the Board's goals, but these objectives, which are slightly changed from the last one.
Anyone want to make a motion? Mrs. Bush?
I'd like to make a motion that the Board of Education approved the 2015-2016 District Improvement Plan, goals and objectives as presented.
Is there a second? Mr. Stansfield? Any questions? Mrs. Irvin?
I want to assume anything. Can you tell me how the objectives and goals, who were achieved, the one, two, five, eight, and ten?
We were trying to be as specific as possible at that point, and we knew that we could use NWEA data, and we want to be very consistent in using that data. We know we can use that in both mathematics and in reading, and so we wanted to be right up front there, and certainly we want all the students to be as well, but that was where we were starting.
Any other questions? Comments or concerns? Okay, all those in favor of approving the District Improvement Plan, goals and objectives? Thank you. Moving on to item seven point zero, seven point one, Cabe Recognition, the Boards, Dr. Conway?
The Board has for several years, in fact, for many years, it's a plaque on the wall up there, been applying for the recognition award, the leadership award, and the Level One Leadership Award. So I would ask if the Board is interested in pursuing that yet again. It would be awarded at the Cabe Caps Conference on November of twenty and twenty-one, and I think it's a distinction, certainly, that not every Board can have, and so I would certainly recommend this to you, but it is up to you.
Mrs. Bush?
Are we, I'm looking at some of the Level Two, and we're inching into the Level Two area for that, and I'm trying to decide if we should be looking into possibly striving for the Level Two recognition.
It's very possible there was one area denied. I'm trying to remember which one it was. We can, if you would allow, and you wish to do this, Mrs. Buchanan and I can go through this and then bring it back to you, and then you can see if you have everything for Level Two. Then I think certainly do it, or just see where we are.
I think that we could still approve or disapprove the application, and whether we qualify for Level One or Level Two, we could at least give the approval to apply for either one, depending on where we fall.
Uh huh. Okay. Does anyone want to make a motion? Mrs. Bush?
I'd like to make a motion that the Vernon Board of Education approved the Cabe Board of Recognition Awards.
Is there a second? Mr. Moore? Questions or comments, concerns? All those in favor? Anyone opposed? Motion cares. Seven point one A, update on school-based housing. Dr. Conway?
I will turn this over to Mr. Picaro, if you have any. I was not prepared for this, so I don't have much information.
Through the Chair, I could share through you, Madam Chair, to Mrs. Irvin. The school-based health centers have opened today, utilizing part-time staff provided from First Choice Health Centers. They're in the process of recruiting full-time APR and NPA to space at our school-based health centers. I know that Maple Street School will be in operation from eight to twelve on Monday and Thursday, and at Rockville High School, from eight to twelve on Tuesday and Friday at this point in time. And so that should ramp up once the full-time staff come on board, but our nurse supervisor, Peggy Stickel, felt it was important, let's get the staff in there, let's get the school-based health centers operating and have some capacity to see students and staff as appropriate at this point in time.
Thank you, Mr. Picaro, and I think a thanks to Peggy as well for supporting our best interest in doing something about with the Board's approval. Can Mr. Picaro deliver that message to Peggy? Thank you.
Any questions on that? Okay, next we have item seven point two, but because that's an executive session, Mr. Moore?
Make the motion that we go into executive session for the Superintendent Evaluation after we complete item eight point zero, which is review of the calendar, and after nine point zero, opportunity for questions from the press with the anticipated action.
Second. All those in favor? Yes. Okay, so we'll move to item eight point zero to review and update the Board of Education calendar. Does anybody have anything for the calendar that's not already here? Okay. Item nine point zero, opportunity for questions from the press on agenda items, seeing if they're not here. Okay, now we will move to executive session.
I don't think they're all.
You too, dear.
You too, dear.